Good afternoon, everyone. Today is Wednesday, August 27, 2025. We're here this afternoon for a work session regarding performance measures for public safety. I'm Kristin Stevens, Chair of the Board of County Commissioners. With me are my fellow commissioners, Commissioner John Kofalos and Commissioner Jody Shattuck McNally. We have our Assistant County Manager with us this afternoon, Lori Kadrich. We have a lot of people in the audience, a lot of people at the table, but I'm going to turn things over to Julie Elser, our Data Program Manager, who's going to be kicking off these items, and we'll just have folks introduce themselves as they speak. So, welcome, everyone, and we're excited to hear about your performance measures.
Thank you. Julie Elser, Data Program Manager. Today, our Public Safety Service area is presenting their performance measures. And just as a reminder to any public that are listening, these performance measures are metrics that each of these offices have selected for themselves that they want to measure and track over time. And they've chosen to share them with us and with the public as a way just to highlight just some of the excellent work that they do. Today, we have five offices and departments presenting. We have a little bit more time today, so we can plan for about 15 to 20 minutes per office. And we will get started with the Office of Emergency Management.
All right. Hi, everybody. Lori Hodges, Director of Emergency Management. I did give you guys a handout here that you guys can take with you and follow in case I speak too fast. You guys have it? So, we have created three performance measures. We created these starting in 2022 to really measure our programs. So, the first one is our Annual Emergency Management Program Assessment. This is a self-assessment that we do with our team to see how we're doing based upon a number of different measures. Those measures are the Emergency Management Assistance, not, I'm sorry, the Emergency Management Accreditation Program, the National Fire Protection Administration Standards on Continuity, Emergency, and Crisis Management, the Emergency Management Performance Grant, the Community Preparedness Guide through FEMA, and relevant research that talks about emergency management programs. So, we combined all of that to come up with a number of different things that we score each year. The second one is the Community Resilience Assessment. And that assessment, we use the National Institutes of Science and Technology, Community Resilience Planning Guide, Social Capital Research on Disasters, the FEMA Community Resilience Indicator Analysis, and the Laramore Department of Health and Environment Community Health Measures that we put together to determine the questions that we ask the community members for that community assessment. And then the third measure is the Emergency Notification Percentage of Opt-ins. So, this is really in partnership with the Laramore Emergency Telephone Authority on trying to get the numbers up for how many people have opted in for emergency alerts. So, those are the three things that we study. So, the first one, the OEM Assessment, you'll see the final results for that assessment were at 76.8%. And as I've stated, I think, in the past, we're really looking at exceptional, not a baseline. So, we don't think that we're a C-level, you know, agency. But according to all the different measures that we're looking at, we ranked ourselves at 66, I mean, sorry, 76.8. The Division of Home Ed Security and Emergency Management also assesses us, and they assess us at 91%. So, we obviously assess ourselves a little bit more strictly than they do. So, those final results are based upon a number of different items, program management, program planning, our operational procedures, how we operate in the Emergency Operations Center, our recovery and continuity, our resource management and contract management, infrastructure systems and protective measures, training and education, exercise evaluations and corrective actions, hazard mitigation, and community outreach. So, we have a number of questions that we evaluate on all those. I do think I'm going to change the goal from 10 because when I was looking at all those different measures today, there's some we can never change, like federal statutes on emergency management are clear. Well, they're never going to be clear. So, I don't know that we can ever change that. Another one is state statutes, right? So, I do think that we'll probably change the goal to be a little bit more realistic there. But anyway, so this was an improvement of 4.2% since last year. So, as you guys can see on that first one, we've been improving steadily over the last three years, and we'll continue to try to do that. This also gives us a really good place to go for goals for the next year, whatever we're kind of lacking in. The Community Resilience Survey, as you guys know, each year, we send out a community resilience survey to the community. This is their ability to assess how we're doing and how they think their neighborhoods and communities are doing with regard to resilience. So, this is based on a number of different criteria again. So, community trust and connectedness, as we've talked about. If there is no trust, resilience will go down in a community. What's the community culture? What's the community leadership? What are those relationships with institutions, whether they're formal or informal? What are the community networks, and then the level of community preparedness? So, this one, you'll see, actually went down a little bit. Where did it go? So, it went from 5.6 to 5.3, and I was looking at the demographics. And this last year, we had probably half of the respondents were from the city of Fair Collins, which we haven't had in the past. So, I think it was a shift in demographics that caused that. But it's also interesting data for us to see, you know, if that's true in urban environments versus rural, or if it's just a outlier. So, we'll see this year. We're using the new public input tool that the county has put together this year to get survey responses. So, that's going to give us a lot better ability to do data. Data, what's the word I'm looking for?
Analysis.
Data analysis, thank you. All right. And then the last one is the Emergency Notification Opt-In Numbers. That one, we're at 32% of people who have opted in to the emergency notification system. And then we're at 74% for people who have touched the system in some way because there's a number of different ways in which you can ask for different opt-ins. So, 74% of people have actually gone to the system, whether it's the text messaging or whether it's the opting in. And I did look for some stats on this. The national average is 10, or the Colorado average is 10 to 20%. The national average is about 10 to 30, so we're still above that average there. And then 82% of folks have opted into the wireless emergency alerts nationwide. That, I don't have that number here for us in the county, but that one is obviously much bigger because that goes across all cell phones. So, that's the data there. So, that one also, you'll see in 2023, LITA did a data cleanup. So, it went down considerably. They got rid of a bunch of duplicates. So, now it's on the rise again at that 74 and 32%. So, those are our three performance measures. Any questions for me? And I gave you guys the Community Resilience Survey with all the details and the demographics there.
Great. Questions for Lori? Commissioner Kofalos?
Well, thank you. Thank you, Lori. A lot of the questions, I think, are answered in the supplementary materials. I am curious, it looks like you had 242 survey responses. What is the percentage, the response rate? I mean, are you sending this survey out, or the people are going to the public input system? What's the response rate?
So, we're doing both. We have a QR code, and we have flyers at all the different events throughout the summer. So, we usually open it up right when the summer events start, and we close it around mid-October. And then the public input, so it's on our website. You can link to that as well. So, people can actually just go to public input and fill out the survey. The 242, I think, is the most we've ever gotten, but it's been averaging between 200 and 240, I think, the last three years. We're hoping with public input, it will be more. So, we have to wait until October to figure that piece out.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything, Commissioner?
No. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm interested, like, I see the survey demographics. It was like Glenhaven was zero, which is a pretty engaged community, so I've just...
Which one?
Glenhaven on the survey responses.
Yeah.
And, you know, that's a pretty engaged community. So, you know, I'm just curious, that's all.
Well, the public input platform, one of the things that it gives us is it shows us some graphs of kind of who has responded. So, Ricardo and I went over that last week, and we saw some areas where we're not getting responses. So, he's now able to target those areas while the survey is still open so we can get maybe a broader brush instead of just hoping that we get everybody.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that was like my next question is, you know, I see some of these areas that are really important that they do opt in or have this information, like, you know, Bellevue and Glenhaven and Waverly, so, and Masonville, and so on. And then also, you could respond then to any of the communities of color to make sure that they understand and get those surveys so we can help kind of target those as well then.
Yeah, that's another benefit of the public input platform is that it does it in English and Spanish. And in the past, Ricardo and I had to take the two different surveys and try and do all the number crunching between them. Public Input's now going to do all that for us between the two different populations. So, that'll be really great.
Great.
Yeah.
Thank you for your work. This is really like life-saving work, really, trying to make sure people understand, you know, public safety and how they can connect to these alerts. And so, I just appreciate it. Thank you, Lori.
Thanks.
Lori, I have a couple of questions. Is there, are there any open-ended questions, or are they sort of just rating kind of questions? So, do you get a sense, like, especially in some of these sort of lower numbers? Like, I see, you know, the numbers have lowered for community leadership and haven't risen a lot for, like, community networks. So, do we have any sense of kind of what folks are wanting to see or why, you know, some of those numbers stay kind of low? I mean, do you have any sense of that?
Yes, and that's another good thing about the new tool is some of our questions, we'll ask the question, and we'll have like a graph for it, and then we ask them for details on it. So, for example, you know, networks, we might ask them, well, where do you network? You know, what are the different groups, or what social media do you use? And we get those open-ended answers. This is going to give us the ability to really do the data crunching and analysis to find out what are the trends and what are we seeing so we can better change what we're doing as we need to. And, you know, like, for example, the last few years, or since we started the survey, people have said that we don't have enough resources for people with disabilities. And so, we've been trying to really figure out, is it that we don't have the resources or that we're not getting the information out about what resources are available? Those are two different things, but by them asking that question, we don't get the answer. So, now we're going to be able to, I think, crunch down into the detail of how can we do better in each area.
Yeah, thank you. And then with regard to community leadership, are you talking about people within, like, let's say, their mobile home park or their resident? Or is that more referring to sort of leadership at the governmental level?
So, it's both. We're looking at informal leadership. So, you know, if you know Mary up in the hills, and she's the one that everybody goes to, that's an informal leader, so we want to make sure that we're connecting to that person. Or is it the, you know, the mobile home park leader, right? Or is it your leaders who are the mayors, the boards, the formal leadership that exists? And we'll get different numbers for those two things, right? So, what's the trust level within the neighborhood? And what's the trust level at the larger level?
Sure.
And that was one thing that was interesting about the survey was that more people felt connected in their broader community than they did in their individual neighborhoods, which I would have definitely thought that that would be different. But that was an interesting statistic from some of the questions that we asked as well.
Yeah, well, thank you. And thank you. I do appreciate that this offers an opportunity to sort of dig in and see where we can do better. I think you guys, that being said, I want you to know we all think you do a great job. It was interesting that the Spanish-speaking community had more of a sense... I mean, there was more of a sense of community, more of a sense of understanding leadership and how to move up in that leadership.
Absolutely, yeah.
So, maybe something, obviously, to learn from how, what they're doing that makes their communities feel together and united and well-led and have opportunities for leadership. And maybe some other communities don't have that sense, so...
Yeah.
Yeah, no, this is great. I'm looking forward to digging into the survey and these numbers. But I appreciate the work that you do. Commissioner Kofalos has a question, too.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm curious, Lori, it just came to mind because I was up at the, up at Red Feather Lakes recently at the food pantry. Do you ever ask questions when we talk about social capital and community resiliency about if any resources or things that people are doing in some of these areas, like Red Feather, are at risk of...
Oh, we do not, but that's a good question.
Would you give that some thought, how you might frame that?
Yeah.
Because there's always potential, with all the uncertainty, for certain resources that were in place in the past to not be in place. And it might be useful information if we can figure out how to frame a proper question.
And then why would they be at risk is a good important answer, too.
Well, I could probably answer some of those things.
Yeah.
But we can do that offline. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right. I think we'll move on then. Thank you. Thank you, Lori and Julie.
Okay, we will move on to the Coroner's Office.
Julie.
All right. We'll have Stephen come up, and you probably know the drill. And make sure your microphone is on with the little red light on.
Is it on?
It's often hard to see. Okay, we might ask you to move then.
Oh, good. Yeah. Good afternoon. So, I'm Stephen Hanks. I'm the Laramore County Coroner. And, yeah, for our performance measures, we really just are looking at the number of cases our investigators have, cases per investigator, cases autopsy-wise, number of autopsies per year that we do for Laramore County residents. But also, as a regional office, we have over 30 counties that we contract with and provide autopsy services for them as well. So, we have ours about, it's pretty even, about 250 Laramore County autopsies out of our facility, and then 268 autopsies from... from other counties that come to us for autopsy services. So, yeah, that's kind of the in-depth, quick overview of kind of what we do and our measures.
Commissioner Shattuck McNally?
Thank you, Laura McKenna, Coroner. Stephen, I appreciate you being here today. And I, the one box down, the cases per coroner employee, seems like that went up a little bit, but the goal still tried to, is above 370. Is there a limit to how many cases an employee can do? Is there, you know, I'm trying to, I'm looking at that, and I'm just what, trying to see, is that kind of, it seems a little, like, do you want to have a lot of cases, or do you want to have less cases? You know, is there a limit or range?
Right, there's not. So our cases are, there's a lot of variability. A case may just be a hospice home death, and we get a report of death form emailed to us. If there's anything suspicious, then they may call, and so it turns into a little bit of a phone investigation. Some of these cases involve going out to homes and doing a scene investigation, but it may be natural circumstances. And then cases that require a little bit more time and in-depth and require the autopsy as well. So we record every death in Laramie County, whether it's a coroner's office jurisdiction or not, so we know if somebody died in a hospital, it's not our jurisdiction, but we want to be able to take those names. We have a really good database now, and it just takes, it takes time to input all that information into the databases as well. But, yeah, that 370 mark is kind of a good place to be, but as you can see, we're, you know, at 437, we're over 400. But we're doing really well. We've made adjustments in our scheduling from 24, 48-hour shifts to working 410s, and giving those investigators a little bit more time off and flexibility. But we're just seeing an increase in the number of cases as well. So, you know, being able to monitor our investigations and our investigators, make sure that they're doing the job appropriately, that they're not getting burnt out, and that they're having that support's important. So, you know, at 437, 430, where we're at now, we're at a comfortable spot. I think 370 is actually pretty low. I think we're at that 400 level, 430 is, we could probably bump, even bump that up a little bit more, closer to where we're at now, because we're in a really good spot with our level of investigations and quality of work.
Great. I appreciate you clarifying that and expanding on that, because it makes sense now if there are just really simple phone call cases that are not involved, and maybe if we'll opt-in. That's really helpful. Thanks for your answer. I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Foss, questions? Please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Stephen. I have two questions. One is, would you expand on the out-of-county autopsies that we do? You mentioned that they occur at our facility. Could you say, expand on that? Because I, and where I'm coming from with that question is, I understand there are some, you know, the condition of the building could be improved upon, and I wondered if we had that building where there weren't leaks and things of that nature, would that increase more out-of-county, you know, other counties bringing, you know, wanting autopsy services, and therefore increase revenue?
Absolutely. And, you know, when I first started in the office as an investigator and an autopsy tech, was in 2012, and up until 2019, when we opened up this facility, we were operating out of McKee Medical Center, and Weld County was part of that as well. So Dr. Burson is the Weld County Coroner. And when we moved into our facility where we're at now in 2019, a couple of years later, Dr. Burson was appointed the Weld County Coroner, and opened up a similar facility in Weld County. So we operated kind of a partnership with him, whereas the number 268 is the number of autopsies for out-of-county cases that we did last year, because half of those, the other half of those cases are going to Weld County on their schedule. So we, they all come to us for one week, they go to Weld County the next week. But forensic pathologists are hard to come by, they're all, a lot of them are retiring. So recently, we had one in Scotts Bluff, Nebraska retire. And so now we're getting the Panhandle of Nebraska and South Dakota coming to us in Weld County for autopsies as well. And the funeral home guy that does a lot of that transport for the Nebraska counties is really impressed by our office in particular, and the service that we provide, and the facilities that we have, and the, kind of the turnaround time and the quality of work. So he's spreading that word to other Nebraska counties that he works with as a funeral home. And I think as far as improving our building, I think that'd be really important. A lot of offices have a drive-through Sallyport, somewhere to the jails, or the Longview Behavioral Health Campus. Like, that's a great place to bring vehicles in, two of them side by side, you can close a door, it's a lot more secure. And we don't have that. We have a small, kind of a carport with a little bit of an opening around the top, that's, gives us a little bit of privacy, but it's still open and open to the elements. And then we have to have a, we have an elevator back there, too, like a little loading dock lift that we have to use, too. And so it's small and it's cramped. It'd be nice if that was a little bit larger, and we could have funeral homes come in, coroner's offices come in, they could park side by side, we'd have more room to operate that way. And then having more secure parking would be really important for my investigators, too. It's an open parking lot, we share the building with probation, we're near the jail and bus stops, a lot of people cut through our parking lot. And I have investigators at the office in the middle of the night now. We don't dispatch them and deploy them from their homes, so they're coming in late at night, and they're going out in the dark. And so they've been parking in that carport as well overnight for safety. But I think if that side of the office was really built up and improved, we'd just, we'd continue to grow and bring in more counties, because, like I said, Nebraska, South Dakota, Wyoming are all coming here.
Thank you. That, your response is most helpful in informing our thinking on this topic.
Thank you.
My second question is, I know it's not reflected in the performance standards, because it's more community-driven.
Yeah.
But can you speak to how we document the death-by-suicide rate?
Absolutely. So, you know, the suicide stats, a lot of them come either from the State Vital Statistics Office, based on the death certificates. And our office does the same thing. We have our database, we have the five manners of death, as far as natural, homicide, accident, suicide, and then undetermined. And so we sign the Laramie County death certificates that are suicides as such. And then, one area where our number and the state number may differ is, we have a medical center of the Rockies and big hospitals. So, you know, somebody may attempt their suicide out of county, and then they die in our hospital. And they're just transferred to MCR that way. So we record that death, but we transfer coroner's jurisdiction back to that original county. So there might be a little bit of a difference there. But really, if it's a Laramie County death and a Laramie County suicide, that's how we record it.
Just a quick follow-up, Madam Chair. And I know that when we look at our behavioral health stats, that's one of the measures. What is the interface between your office and behavioral health, so that we have accurate data that represents this particular issue? And is that displayed on the behavioral health site, on your site, public health? Where is all that information?
Yeah, it's on the public health dashboard in the Health Department with Tom Gonzalez. I work really closely with Dr. Jared Olson, and providing statistics to him, whether it's suicide statistics, accidental overdose statistics, and those areas. And then we host a suicide review with members of the school districts, the hospitals. Commissioner Jody Shattuck McNally is on it, Jared Olson is there as well, so, and Alliance for Suicide Prevention. So a lot of public and private partners, we get together and put our heads together and share data and statistics and...
Thank you kindly, sir.
...come up with solutions. Thank you.
Thanks, thank you.
Commissioner Shattuck McNally?
I also want to just add that it is, there is a link to the suicides numbers, and some of that data on the behavioral health site, that I think also links to the Department of Health, I think it's the same information, but it's also on that site as well. So, thank you for your work.
Of course. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Stephen. Appreciate it. We'll move on to the sheriff.
Good afternoon, County Commissioners, Assistant County Manager. My name is Tim Keaton. I'm a captain with the Laramie County Sheriff's Office. We'll jump into the state of the patrol side of the Sheriff's Office first. I'm not going to try to account for that 32.8, you see that substantial dip in calls for service? That was actually the product of changing of our recording, record system. So that's definitely an anomaly. If you eliminate that, you can see it's just kind of steadily trending up. The nice thing is, we had about a thousand fewer calls for service in '24 than we had in '23. But certainly, on the high side, higher than we would like to see it. I'm going to go below that next, because I'm going to spend a little bit more time on the slides on the right. For the emergency services side of things, with wildfires, search and rescue, and hazmat calls, it's a little misleading. We have extremely few hazmat calls that we are truly responsible for. While we are designated what is called the DARA, which is the Designated Emergency Response Authority, for hazmat bills primarily not related to roadway incidents. The Colorado State Patrol is the DARA for anything really in Laramie County that happens on the roadway. So we don't have a ton of incidents of that nature. Really, the trend upward that you see there are both in new starts of wildfires. And I got to tell you, before I started the job, I found it remarkable how many fires seem to start on a daily basis. The good news is, they're not getting very large. You know, we're holding the probably 90, high 90-plus percent of them well below one acre. But it certainly takes resources, because we respond to every smoke report, even if no fire is found. And then when there is an actual fire, we're sending our IA, or Initial Response, Initial Attack Module, or Crew, to deal with that. And usually, they're doing an amazing job getting them under control relatively quickly, which is a very good thing for resource. But it just, they're running all over the place, sometimes three, four, five different fires per day. Ironically, and I don't really have an anecdotal thought process on why this is, but it feels as if there's a lot more people recreating in our county. For one, we live here for a reason. It's a beautiful county. I've had people pontificate that potentially it's people not traveling overseas as much, and therefore coming to Colorado, whether it's from out of state, or maybe trying to get away from some of the more busy areas just west of the Denver metro area, which is a population, you know, many times larger than ours, therefore it's less busy in our recreational mountains. But it also alarms me how many people get lost and/or go up there and get injured and/or altitude sickness if they're coming from somewhere other than Colorado in a very low elevation. It's remarkable, and the numbers are representative of the fact that the workload is going up substantially for our emergency services folks. It truly is. Shifting over to some, the two charts on the right, I really want to spend a little bit of time on the mental health calls. Initially, and I was going to say that the statistic looks good, and let's not downplay that, it absolutely looks good, and it is good. But I want to throw some perspective into this, in that, in, at some point in 2022 is when we added additional co-responder units with clinicians, based on the opioid money that Commissioner Jody Shattuck McNally helped get us awarded, which was extremely beneficial. And one would think that with more, at first glance, I thought with more technicians available and units to respond to these, that the number of incidents they saw would actually go up. But when we started digging into this, what we find is, one of the most valuable things that the clinicians do with the co-responder units is follow-up. So they're reaching out and making contact with somebody who has had a mental health crisis, let's say in the last few weeks, that they've addressed and dealt with. But this is just a check-in. Hey, you still taking all your meds? What has freaked you out in the last few days? And they really go through, and I'm confident, I do it no justice, in terms of, I'm sure they don't say what has freaked you out, but you understand what I mean. By having this checkup, I think we've substantially reduced the number of incidents that rise to the level of being needed to be reported to law enforcement. So that's really encouraging. I think that there's significant value, and when you dive into what is creating this number, it's the statistics support that the effort is working. There's actually a 41% decline in 2023 as compared to 2022, just on higher availability of technicians, and, or I should say clinicians, and the deputies who are truly trained at a higher level to deal with mental health crisis. So I think it's a huge win, and I think the statistics support it. Yes, ma'am?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I appreciate the kind words, but, you know, it's really, for me, this work is important to help people in crisis. And a couple of things that I think is interesting, I just want to point out.
Your mic, Chris.
Thank you. Thank you for the kind words. And I appreciate, you know, your shout-out for this. And I think it's really important to recognize, it was more people, but more hours, because it used to stop at 5:00, and now they're going to midnight. So it's not all 24 hours, but at least it's covering those 5 to midnight, that's when a lot of these crises happen, especially on a Friday night or a Saturday night. So I think that's important. And then also, as the numbers that has been, because the co-responders have to do a pretty robust report every six months to the ROAC on the numbers, and it was really how do we, how we track this. But I think what, two numbers I wanted to share, and I don't know if you, if you have, I know you know these, but I just wanted to point them out, is that two, only 2% of the folks that are interacting with co-responders versus patrol deputies or regular deputies, I won't say regular, but they're all special.
No, for sure.
But only 2% are actually going into the criminal justice system. All the rest are actually getting resources and getting that follow-up, like you said.
Agreed.
And safety plans are getting taken to the hospital or to Longview. So I think that is a remarkable number, that we're saving the community money that way, because we're not taking them in to, maybe to get them booked or something, but actually getting them into resources or helping their family with a safety plan. I think that's important. And then the other one, that the numbers that they have been looking at, is a lot of times the deputies and the co-responders and clinicians, that you, as you appropriately said, how they're so highly trained, they spend longer time on the call.
Oh.
Along with the clinicians. And I have gotten to ride along with that, so I know it can take a long time. But that allows the other deputies to go out and do other calls, like speeding, or traffic accidents, or other things, which frees them up, and so they can get out, because they don't spend as long on a call as a co-responder. And seeing those differences in the numbers are quite significant. And I think that also is a good thing for, to show, because I know regular deputies were spending a lot of time kind of with these calls in the long run, that we're trying to, kept them from doing other things, because they were still flying up on these calls, but have these dedicated folks who are able to take care of this. And the numbers are pretty striking to me. So I just want to thank the Sheriff's Office and all of you that are supporting this program and knowing that it is, there's lots of benefits that are, you know, not in maybe these metrics, but that, because I get to read these wonderful long reports we require of all of our grantees, that I think it's pretty remarkable, the progress there. And I know Sergeant Cook, and his lieutenant, Ben Hook.
Ben Hook.
I always, do I have the right name, lieutenant, but also rank? And I just want to, and there's lots of really important folks that are doing this work, so I just wanted to share that. But also, I think the benefit is the rest of your deputies, because you guys are sometimes strained. Like, that's why I asked about the other number of deputies going to one area, they're able to get it back out to other calls and other calls for service. So I think that's also a big benefit. So thanks for letting me share that.
Absolutely. And you're absolutely spot-on in the form of having such a high percentage of these people who are in mental health crisis not ultimately enter the criminal justice system is a solid win, not just for the individual who doesn't get criminally charged, but for the entire community. And every aspect, between the taxpayers and the law enforcement entity, everybody involved wins. It's a great, great, great win. I 100% agree with you.
Captain Keaton, on that same metric, do we know how many of these are repeat calls? So like, that might go to sort of, you know, the idea that this is working, and I believe it is. But, you know, are we seeing fewer repeat calls from people, or are they, because I know that that, you know, happens with all of you. Because I know that that, you know, happens with all of you first responders, is there's people that you hear from quite frequently.
For sure.
And can, you know, I think kind of, um, being able to not have to see those people and making sure that they're getting the treatment they need is a really important piece. Any, any sense of that?
That's a fantastic question. I don't have that number written down in front of me, but I can find it out for you, for sure.
Yeah, just be, I think it'd be a helpful data point for us to kind of see, you know, effectiveness. Thank you. And we'll let you go, talk about your last metric, too.
Um, and, and this is a, another solid win. I think that that five-hundred-and-ten number probably has some association with coming out of COVID and some of the, uh, mental health crises that developed into suicide attempts flowing into that. Um, what I really like seeing here is while you've seen the number of co responding units, the number of calls that they're responding to literally double in the last two years, it is far better for them to be responding to these calls than, and, and, and I agree with you, Commissioner, it's not that they're ordinary deputies, but these deputies don't, don't have this additional highly-trained mental health aspect to the, uh, there, there's so many things to know as a, as a law enforcement professional. You can't know everything. It, it's kind of like medical world, right? There's specialized doctors for a reason, because things get super technical. And so having a hi, the, a, a much higher percentage of these being responded to with co-responding unit is a big win as well. Go ahead. Thank you, Julie.
Any questions? I think Commissioner Kavals has a question.
You're done with your presentation?
Nope, nope, I'm just moving on to the jail. So, but if you wanna talk about something on patrol, let's do that.
Yes, please. I have two questions. And one is a follow-up to what, uh, the Chair, Commissioner Stevens, asked about repeat ca- calls.
Yes.
I'm also wondering, you must have a breakout of the, the reason for going out. You know, the first, the co-responder reason, in other words, uh, that would be helpful information. Is it, is it because people are ta- are threatening or I, having suicide ideations, or is it other kinds of mental health crises? If, that, I think that data would be important. What are the reasons why folks are being called out? And, and then to go back to the first slide regarding, uh, sheriff patrol services.
There you go.
So do you, did you understand my previous question?
I, I absolutely do. Um, I, I also don't have that, but I can, I will get you that, that information for sure.
My other question, uh, Tim or Captain, and that is, um, uh, sheriff patrol services. Are we able to break that out by district? Because I think there are six or seven patrol districts. And, you know, we often hear that we don't have enough deputies up in Red Feather Lakes area. Is there a way to break out this number by?
There is.
This is how many calls we've gotten up in the District One, District Seven, that would be helpful.
That's a great question, and I think we can absolutely get that. I don't have it right in front of me.
I thought you had it totally memorized.
You have far more faith in me than you should, sir.
I have pretty good faith.
But, uh, I, I would guess it's gonna be relatively consistent with population base, but I'll find that information for you.
Yeah, that would be great.
For sure.
Thank you, sir.
Absolutely.
So, Captain, we gave you some homework.
I'm, I'm taking me some notes.
I appreciate that.
Or I'll forget it.
All right, we'll move on to the, uh, did you, I think Commissioner Shattuck-Nally has a-
Oh, I was trying to find the report. I have them here, but I know that, that that is called, it, it is called that. But there are also calls out not only for suicide ideations, but for substance abuse.
For sure.
And that's a large number of that. So I think, and also just families, you know, calling, concerned, so.
Family disturbances and a lot of different things like that.
I just wanted to kind of share that, just not only suicide attempts, but I just, I, I think those numbers are readily available. They've been, and certain, and Corporal Faye's been, been tracking that very well. Thank you.
Yes, you're right. So moving to the, to the jail side of the sheriff's office, one of our primary statutory, uh, charges. Um, looking at the top graph there, you see a significant drop in starting about two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty, and really, if you look at that, it's, and then it's maintained relatively consistently. That is really, uh, represented, a representative of a change in the law as to what was a jailable offense and what was not. We changed at the state legislature level, the, a lot of the drug offenses that where somebody otherwise would have been uh, booked into the jail. That changed to where they were just summoned and released and not booked in. So that's been pretty consistent once it went down. One of the big things I wanna look at and, and talk a little bit about today is that in our world, we call it the ADP or the Average Daily Population. So if you look at this chart on the bottom, that's your average daily population. Again, you see the significant drop regarding the change in laws as to what was a significant violation of the law and, and, and now is, is less significant at that. The scary thing really for us as a, as an agency is not represented on this chart. So starting in about April or May of this year, we started approaching and every, every, usually most weekends hitting an ADP of six hundred, which is substantially higher than this. And today, we're almost averaging probably somewhere between five-hundred-and-eighty and six hundred. So I sat down with our jailed division commander before coming here this morning and just talked about cause and effect, challenges, what he's experiencing, what he's seeing. And a lot of this really has to do with challenges in the court systems, I believe, where they be, they have become so backed up that nobody's being sentenced. Um, we may hear today from ASD and, and different challenges that they're seeing for a similar reason. So I asked him to break that down for me, and we have an ADP today, right before I left here, of five-hundred-and-ninety inmates. So of those five-hundred-and-ninety inmates that were, that, that are being held in, in our custody, seventy-seven of those have been sentenced. So literally, you have five-hundred-and-thirteen individuals who are in there and not yet sentenced. So that becomes a significant challenge, that it's just a, a backup in the court systems. One of the aspects that we're seeing in this is when, once they've been sentenced as well, and if it is for a long enough duration, they don't do that incarceration at our jail, they are transferred to the Department of Corrections at the state level. A lot of people would, would differentiate it as the prison versus jail. When we calculate our daily cost to house an inmate, i- it's about two-hundred-and-forty-two dollars per day, per inmate. So we bill DOC for carry, for holding their inmates right now. As I'm, as I speak right now, we have thirty-six inmates that have been sentenced to a period of time that need to go to DOC and have not yet. And, and what we're seeing is, everybody's experiencing budgetary crisis, and they're saying, we know that we need to hold them, however, we don't have the capacity, you have to keep them. So at our daily rate of two-hundred-and-forty-two dollars, they agree to reimburse us seventy-seven dollars. And it's just frustrating, because they can set that at whatever they want to, and we, we really have no say in that. But while everybody is experiencing budgetary crisis, this is, is doing nothing but contributing. When our number goes up and the amount that they pay as a percentage goes down, it becomes that much more challenging. Um, there's a lot of other nuances to what, why we're seeing our, our average daily population rise, but that's probably the, the lion's share of the challenges we're experiencing with that. I think at that, I'll, I'd love to open it up. Any questions?
Thank you, Captain. Any questions? Go ahead, Commissioner Kavals.
First question, so when we see this performance standard next year for twenty-twenty-five, the average daily inmate population may be around five-sixty, five-fifty?
My guess is it'll be that or above. Depending on what we see in the next, uh, four or five months of the year, it could be a little higher than that, yeah.
Just a couple more, please. Thank you, sir.
Of course.
Regarding the matter of, um, having to hold Department of Corrections inmates at a much lower rate, you suggested we have no say in the matter. Why is that?
It, it always alarms me how frequently the state hands down unfunded mandates. And this is no different. We, uh, when they pass a law and/or just, um, make a decision that impacts all of the counties in the state of Colorado, but don't attach a monetary note to it.
Well, and I certainly get that. I, I guess, what is their methodology for determining? Uh, if this person were in a, in a prison, it would be only costing them seventy-seven dollars a day to house that person? How do they come up with this number?
Great question. My guess is that's not the case. I'm, I, I'm gonna find this out, because I, now I'm curious.
I'd like to understand, because this-
My guess is, they probably average each county jail in the state. And, and obviously, if you're holding two inmates and you're, you're, the, the wife of the sheriff is making them bologna sandwiches for food, your cost per inmate is substantially less. And, and you laugh, but I'm, I'm, I'm here to tell you that does happen. Um, so I, I, I don't know. I'll look into that. That's a great question.
Curious, and one last question, please. Um, and, and thank you for the, the data points regarding the number of folks that are in there today. And how many of them are sentenced, and how many of them are not sentenced? And I'm wondering, uh, I mean, and as you indicated, Captain, there are lots of nuances to all this. But what percentage or how many people are incarcerated that either are not able to bond out, bail out, and they're waiting for a hearing? I know that, and I know we're trying to address, that's the purpose of pre-trial services, and I'm sure we'll hear more about that. So I'm just curious, do we know how many folks are in the county jail who are waiting to have a, a trial or a hearing, uh, but, you know, the, the system is backed up, they haven't been sentenced, uh, and they haven't even had a trial or a hearing? And yet, we're trying to address some of that with our, with our pre-trial services, and I'm sure that's helping. Does that make sense, sir?
It, it completely does, and I would tell you that
Okay.
what we're experiencing, and I would, I, I am encouraged to hear from our other public safety professionals who are gonna come up after me. Um, to me, I think we've seen evidence of the, the judges being too lenient on bond recently. Um, backfire on us and have substantial, literally, um, life-ending consequences within our community, which is extremely unfortunate. So I would say the people who are getting a significant cash bond that can't bond out absolutely need to be in there, because we're seeing people get out with no, I mean, right out about a year ago, we, we saw somebody get out, uh, for a very significant charge and bludgeoned his mother to death after getting out. Um, that's a travesty where I feel the system as a whole failed the, to protect the public, which is one of our most significant charges, what we should be doing.
Sure. No, thank you, and of course, this is a, indeed a very complicated matter. And I look forward to hearing from our, um, our alternative sentencing folks and our, our community justice folks and, and from our district attorney. So try to put all the puzzles, pieces of the puzzle together.
Definitely complex. Thank you, Commissioner.
Anything else? Any other questions? Well, thank you, Captain. Appreciate you being here to present these metrics, and, um, it sounds like we gave you some homework, and thank you for taking notes on those, and I will look forward to hearing about those, um, additional statistics in the future. Thank you. Um, we will move on to the district attorney.
Come on up. We might just wanna do a switch of chairs, too, if you may wanna come up to, if you wanna come up to the table. And we're, we're running ahead of schedule, so we're good on time.
Oh, are we? Okay, good. There were a lot of slides, but only a couple more people to speak, so. That's not always the case for us, so I'm glad to be running it ahead of time.
And I don't have any, um, slides on, on, on bond or pre-trial specifically, so I don't know if it makes sense, Commissioner Kavals, for me to just give my two cents on the question you just had now, since we're on the subject?
I think that's fine.
Yeah, right. Exactly. Right. Well, a dime isn't worth what it used to be, but nevertheless.
You can't get a cup of coffee with a dime.
Yeah. Um, I, I largely agree with, um, Captain Keaton's analysis. Um, you know, the folks that we are seeing held pre-trial, um, are the folks either that are quite dangerous and presenting an active community safety risk, or they're this very complicated set of folks that may not have a high-level charge, but have a whole bunch of charges, or have dozens of failures to appear, or have holds from some other thing, like a warrant out of another jurisdiction, uh, or, or a parole hold from DOC or something to that effect. Um, Ms. Humphrey's team has been sending this, um, sort of low-level bond analysis for quite a few years at this point. Um, and obviously, she can speak more to that, but, you know, I think what we found at this point is i- i- at the beginning, it was useful, and it was a great project, um, that I'm really glad that, um, that we, that we did, that we endeavored in. Um, and we were able to sort of get some of those people that might have just fallen through the cracks, um, have their bond addressed, maybe get them out, um, at the beginning. But now, most of the people on that list, that quote-unquote, you know, low-bond list, um, are that complicated set of people, that set of people that there's, yes, it's a low-level charge, but there are reasons that a monetary bond does need to be set. Um, the, the biggest bond battle we are facing now, uh, as Captain Keaton indicated, is, is getting, um, appropriate bonds on these high-level cases. Um, we, we have a new magistrate as of, oh, maybe four or five months ago at this point, um, that we have really struggled on some very serious cases to get, um, uh, appropriate bonds on. And, and we're strategizing internally, um, ways that we can address that better. Um, but I, you know, so certainly, I'm aware of the, of the impact to the, to the jail and to the county's, um, bottom line, that folks pre-trial, uh, in custody pre-trial have. Um, but I, I think that's, um, there, there are not a lot of easy solutions to, to where we're sitting right now. But I'd let Ms. Humphrey weigh in on that subject, too.
As long as we're still good on time. Okay, because we have till three, so.
Okay. I think there's a variety of factors when you look at the jail popul- when you look at the jail population. And I think that, um, it's pretty consistent across the state, that they're seeing this similar type of setting. So like today, there's thirteen percent in the jail that are actually sentenced. Um, seventy-six percent are pre-trial, and the remainder are some type of holds. But a lot of different factors can go into that, um, for a variety of reasons. We did look, because ASD's numbers are down significantly, whereas prior to COVID, they were full, and we had about a seven-month waiting list, and we were at capacity, and we're at half-capacity right now. Um, other jurisdictions also have low sentencing. Um, we looked at Denver. The Denver, um, jail has the same kind of similar statistics that we do. So there's a variety of factors, and you, I don't think you can really pinpoint exactly one thing over the other, because someone may have a low-level offense that's sitting in their pre-trial, but they might have another case or another hold out of another jurisdiction that keeps them there. Um, we are looking at creative ways, um, with ASD, and, and we're talking about, can we get more folks out of the jail and maybe under our supervision rather than sitting in jail? Like, for example, we looked a couple of weeks ago, and there was fifty-three individuals in the court, in the jail that were, uh, repeat DUI offenders, and that's the only charges that they had. So is there a way to kind of look at that a little bit more? I will tell you, since COVID happened, um, the number of cases and the number, not cases, but the number of court dates have been elongated. So whether that's kind of fixing what happened during COVID and, and getting more of a, a docket that's more efficient, and I, I don't wanna say efficient, because that's, that seems bad, but I think there's more court dates than we've had for normal times. So dispositions may take a little bit longer for a variety of reasons.
The, the one other thing I would add is the issue of competency. And, um, as the commission knows, you know, we now have a competency docket, um, which I think has been a, a great help. Um, but the instances of competency have just skyrocketed over, you know, the last decade, um, you know, nationwide. Um, you know, and certainly other jurisdictions in Colorado are experiencing the identical issues. And, you know, part of the- And, you know, part of the goals of the competency docket is, you know, A, to get folks restored to competency, but B, to get folks out of custody when safe to do so, so that those restorative services can be administered in the community and not just sitting in jail. And that has been successful. Um, but, you know, those are just very, very complicated cases, and some of them present some, some serious safety risks. Um, that competency docket, you know, I don't have today's docket numbers, but it's, it usually hovers over 100 cases. Um, so that's, that's a huge number. Um, and again, compared to where that number would have been 10 years ago, it's, it's really striking, um, how many folks are sort of i- in that level of, um, crisis.
Great. Thank you. All right. Well, let's move on to the metrics.
Okay.
And I appreciate all the additional information. Thank you.
Um, so I guess I didn't introduce myself for the, the purposes of the meeting, but Gordon McLaughlin, Laramie County District Attorney. Um, on the first slide here, I'll start on the left, um, that is our total caseload numbers. Um, so that top line that looks, I don't know, pinkish on the screen, um, that is felonies, that middle line that looks greenish on the screen, uh, my PowerPoint here is blue, but, um, uh, that's misdemeanors, and then the bottom line is petty offenses and infractions. And so that's just a visual of our total caseload, which is really sort of, you know, what is the fundamental thing driving our workloads in our office? Um, what that shows is that felony cases have, have been ticking down a little bit over the course of these years. It's sort of a little hard to visualize there, um, but you can see that, the total number at the top there, you know, we start on the left at over 3,000, and now we're, um, you know, just at about two and a quarter. So that felony level has been ticking down. Um, misdemeanors, though, have rebounded essentially to pre-COVID levels. Um, and so that number is, is just about as high. I think there's a couple factors going on there. One that we'll probably talk about with some of these other graphs as well is, I guess, three years ago, there was a big, um, what they called misdemeanor reform at the legislature that re-categorized a lot of things, um, and so it, it made some more things misdemeanors. Uh, but then I think there's just been a rebound in, um, sort of active policing since COVID, um, and since, um, sort of other national criminal justice crises and local criminal justice issues that happened around that same time. And so there's just sort of more activeness, uh, on that lower misdemeanor level. Um, and so I, I would expect that to, to probably start plateauing at some point now that we're sort of back in that pre-COVID number level. Um, over on the right top, um, we have cases that receive straight jail sentences. We wanted to look at that in part of sort of what we just talked about. What is the impact on the jail population? What is that impact on the county budget? Um, again, that number has ticked down a little bit over the years while misdemeanor case levels have gone up significantly, right? And so, um, no, there's not a big decline in that line, but certainly, I think the decline in conjunction with increasing case levels is showing that we're really being sort of very thoughtful in who is necessary to go to jail post-sentencing, post-conviction, um, and who we can deal with in alternative means. And we get into some of those other numbers, I think, on the next slide. But then, looking at the bottom, um, that's the total percentage of cases involving incarceration of any sort, um, so, um, so not just jail. And, um, that shows that that has decreased a little bit, again, as we're sort of being very thoughtful and expansive in exploring some of those, um, sentencing opportunities. And then, tracking recidivism rate, the thing to note down there is that's always gonna be a little bit of a lagging indicator. So that last year there is 2023, not 2024, um, because we, we have to track that. You know, we've also looked at tracking some longer-level recidivism, um, which, which can be interesting, but then again, by the time we're providing you the information, that's pretty late. Um, so for the strict purposes of today's, we, we just wanted to sort of give as, as updated a number as we could. Go to the next slide there. Um, starting on the top left, um, this was a, a carryover metric from, um, really, I think, probably the last, like, six, seven years of this, um, this metric, county metric project. And so there was that goal there of, of 450. Um, what we've seen, that I know of, discussed with the commission before, is our number of juvenile cases has, has declined significantly. So we're filing about 400 juvenile cases total each year right now. Um, so obviously, that goal of 450 is, is, is not even mathematically impossible. But what we've really seen is two things there. Um, one is, um, we've seen, um, just changes in what SROs are doing with cases, because school districts have, in the community, have requested sort of some, some different, um, strategies there. Um, and we've seen things just across the board being what we call prefile diverted, right? So diverted before it comes to the DA's office, meaning we've never filed a case. So that might be an SRO sending someone across the street to the center, um, but it can also mean a lot of sort of other things, and even things that are much more sort of minimal even than, like, signing someone up for the center, but taking classes and just getting education. And we've really encouraged that, um, on our end, that, you know, if we're gonna divert a kid anyway, the whole purpose of diversion is let's get this kid out of the criminal justice system and unencumbered from all that that, um, puts upon them. And so if we can do that prefile diversion, that's great, and so we've supported that. Um, but so our juvenile case numbers are pretty low. That also means the cases we have are that remaining sliver of higher-level cases. So it gets more and more challenging to divert those. Um, certainly, across the state, we've also seen some concerns with some increase in juvenile crime, especially gun violence and access to firearms issues. And so obviously, those are cases we have to be very, very careful, and if that's someone that's appropriate for a diversionary sentence, often, they are not going to be. Um, so we're probably gonna have to reset what that goal is. Certainly, our goal remains, let's divert as many kids as safely appropriate, but that number's just, just a lot lower these days. Um, going below that in the left side, um, we did notice an error in the graph, unfortunately. So that 2023 number is supposed to be 1195, not 1995. So there wasn't a spike and a decline. It's, it's just been pretty consistent across the board, sort of bouncing between about 1,300, 1,200, um, each year. Um, again, that sort of combines with some of those other numbers we talked about before. Um, those alternatives to incarceration are something that, that we continue to, to value. Um, going to the top in the right-hand side, this is also a holdover metric that we've been presenting to the county for, you know, uh, since even before my time. Um, it's victim contacts, and this included everything. So it included, um, when we're talking to a victim at a court hearing, it included in-person meetings we're setting up, but it also included, you know, every phone call, every voicemail, every letter that we send, every victim impact statement, and included every touch, which is important. All those touches are definitely really valuable. Um, but when we looked at it this year, we said, boy, that's really strange that the last two years, it's been lower, because we know we've served so many victims. Um, so that's why we decided to also present that lower number, which sure, shows total number of victims, which has actually increased. So we're serving a ton of victims. Um, the other reason that top graph can be sort of a little bit odd as a goal is that another goal that we've talked to the county a lot about is reducing, um, uh, our time to resolution. Um, that also goes a little bit back to Commissioner Kofalos's question about who's sitting in, in custody pretrial, right? And what we'd seen is that when we launched our data dashboard project, so not this project, but our, our public data dashboard, DA's around the state realized that that time to disposition had been increasing year after year for a long time, and then with COVID spiked even higher, and so it was just sort of critically high. And so we've worked with other stakeholders in the, in the system to get that number down, and it's trended down, um, pretty steadily, um, since, I guess, three years now, since we launched that project. Um, now, that's gonna create fewer touches for victims, right? Because if there's only four hearings and it's in the system for six months as opposed to, you know, eight hearings for nine months, well, that's gonna be fewer phone calls, fewer letters, fewer meetings. Um, so I think that's probably why that number has been reflected lower, um, even though we're doing, uh, uh, an even greater sort of service level to, to a number of victims. Um, going to the third slide, um, I'll start on the, the top middle there. Um, that is our adult diversion metric. So that's the number of adults that we are diverting, again, um, uh, meaning that we are, um, requiring, um, um, you know, uh, uh, connection with services and completeness of requirements that can be things ranging from paying vic, uh, restitution to victims, doing UPS, attending anger management classes, attending substance abuse classes, restorative justice, and doing that pre-conviction and getting someone on their way out of the system. Um, you know, we've seen a little bit of decline in 2024, um, which, you know, we've been discussing. Um, I think there's a couple things going on. One is that we really went from zero to 100 in this program, um, or sort of literally eight to 246, as it shows there, um, very quickly. And so we're still trying to figure out exactly who the right population for this program is, where we can make the biggest impact. And if you look over to the right, that's the success rate of our adult diversion, and you can see that success rate is really high. So we are choosing the right people to take advantage of this. Um, over time, I would like to see that number from 2024 bounce back up. I think, you know, sort of around 200 is probably the, the correct place for it to be. Um, but the other thing we saw is back to that, um, quote-unquote misdemeanor reform that made some felonies misdemeanors, it made some misdemeanors petty offenses, and it decriminalized some petty offenses. And so if we have things that used to be a misdemeanor that we could give diversion to, now it's a petty offense, it's sometimes frankly not worth a defendant's time to do the five things we're asking them to do. They'd rather just take the petty offense conviction, pay a fine, and get on their way, because it's easier, frankly, right? Now, they're not gonna be better off, but it is easier on an individual basis sometimes for those defendants. And so, uh, an attorney might not be recommending that they, that they do diversion, because it's, it's a, a more time-intensive program. Um, but our goal is to, is to nudge that a, a little bit higher again. Um, then, looking at the bottom middle there, um, that's the number of cases receiving deferrals. Um, again, sort of that ties back into that conversation about looking at alternative sentences. Um, deferrals, meaning, um, there is a conviction, um, they have to do some things that are probably a little bit more rigorous than a, a diversion sentence. They are on probation, either supervised or unsupervised during that timeframe. Um, but if they come back successfully, then that conviction is withdrawn and the case is dismissed, and so they still get a pretty big benefit at the end. Um, that's still a very valuable tool that we're using. Um, and then that success rate is there on the left. Um, and so you can see, it's gonna be a little lower than diversion, because they're higher-risk cases. That's why they're getting that, um, more structured programming of deferral as opposed to diversion. Um, but still, that's a, a pretty high success rate that we're pretty proud of, um, there, and, and we're continuing to sort of look for, for ways to, to offer those deferrals when appropriate. And that's what I got, but happy to take questions and all that.
Thank you. Um, questions for the district attorney? Commissioner Kofalos?
Yeah, I, I have a few, but in lieu of the time, I'll just ask one. And it goes back to, um, previous slide regarding, actually, the first slide, number of cases filed and the misdemeanors and the petty offenses in particular, petty offense infraction. What percentage of those are folks who have self-identified as homeless people?
That's a great question, and I, I don't know the answer, because that's not a question that, that we are asking folks. Um, like, we don't internally track that information.
We track defendant, uh, zip code.
I asked you to come up if you, yeah, sorry.
Hi, sorry. I'm Chelsea Greenwood. Um, I work with the district attorney's office, and we do track, uh, different things related to, um, zip code and address for defendant. Um, however, when it comes to, uh, transient populations, we have a little bit more difficulty, because we could have a lot of people that are at, um, Conifer Street at the mission or, you know, different shelters and, or, you know, they don't really have a place that they're going, so they list someone else's address. So we don't get someone that's actually identifying, because our information is from law enforcement as well, that actually says transient or unhoused.
I, I, yeah.
And often, if, if they're in custody, I think that is a question that the jail knows the answer to, but a lot of these folks that you're talking about, like petty offenses, they would never have been in custody, they wouldn't have been through the jail.
Well, it won't, we'll leave it at that, but I'm, I'm understanding, and maybe these folks can speak to it, that the assessment tool that we use for pretrial, I thought there are questions in there that relate to, um, whether they have connections to the community or that sort of thing. But we don't need to get into that, because I wanna make sure that you guys get a chance.
Yeah, and a, a lot of those people, you know, the petty offense folks are gonna be summoned, and so they're not gonna have ever been to the jail, or, and they're not gonna get the, the CJA, um, you know, assessment either.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Thank you. Commissioner Shag, if you have any comments, questions?
I, uh, in a matter of time, I'll just maybe, um, I'll ask him offline and break it live, if that's all right. And just thank you for the work, and it seems like you have a lot more metrics than others, so I know you had a lot to share. Um, so, um, be interested, um, about talking about that, you know? I know there's a lot of things to track, but, um, thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks for clarifying all of this.
It was a, it was a tough exercise to try to come up with the right things, right? And so to the extent that there's things that would be helpful to the county, um, or will be helpful for sort of the, the next step of this project of, like, tying all of these things together, we're happy to look at other things, because, you know, through our data dashboard project, there is a lot that we track. Um, and so, you know, every time we put a metric on here, we're like, well, we need 10 other metrics to explain that metric, right? Um, and so it was difficult for us to narrow down, but, um, you know, we're happy to, to continue to hone or to, to put in new things to the extent that's helpful to the, the overall project.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, um, I, I probably have to think about it, but I'd really like to see the, the rates around diversion, because I think that's really important to, you know, not only this commission, but people in the community, is where, where that can happen and where that makes sense. It's obviously, you know, good to do that, right? Some people just really need treatment or other kinds of resources in the community to stabilize and not, not reoffend. And so, um, I, I'm glad that we're working on that and that, you know, glad to hear, I, I know the community is glad to hear, especially with youth, um, that, that they won't even be, you know, kind of part of the system, you know, that that's happening way, like, in the prefile, is that what you call that?
Yep.
Stage, um, so that, you know, we don't necessarily need young people unless the crimes are very violent to be able to, you know, have a record and have, starting off their life that way. So thank you for that work. Um, with that, we will, um, move on to, uh, community corrections and alternative sentencing.
Okay. Good afternoon, everybody. Um, Alexa Songley, Director of Community Corrections, happy to be here. Thanks. Um, so I'm just gonna start out talking about our, um, the first graph here on the left, the successful, um, completion rate. And as you can see, we're sitting at, um, 68%. There's a couple, uh, pieces of information I'd like to highlight with this for you real quick. Um, the num, number one is, as you heard a lot of folks talking about today, the changes in laws and, um, how that trickles down all the way through the system. So I'd just like to highlight that, um, throughout those changes, as you can see, our successful completion rate has remained pretty stable. So we're getting, um, riskier folks with more, um, complex cases and complex risks and needs, and, um, we're maintaining a pretty, um, steady, uh, successful completion rate. So I'd like to say that. The other piece that I'd like to mention is, um, well, I guess there's two other ones. One, um, we are a high-risk, um, facility, um, serving folks that are, um, assessed as high-risk. And the other piece of that is we are sitting, so the statewide successful completion rate for community corrections programs, um, whether or not they're high-risk, is sitting at 62%. Um, if you remove our stats from that bunch, it's sitting at 61%. So, um, we're doing a pretty good job up here in Laramie County. Um, and, uh, then if we move over to, uh, the restitution collected, as you can see, um, we're sitting above our goal. It's a pretty high number. Um, the piece of information I'd like to highlight about that is that, um, this is one of the real benefits of community corrections programming, is, um, that number actually represents, um, money put back into our community, um, it represents folks working, it represents folks, um, paying, um, their debts, and it, and it represents restoration to our community as well. So, um, our folks, while they're serving their sentence, um, they are, um, putting back into our community in meaningful ways. Um, below that, you can see, um, number of days diverted from, um, prison or jail. Um, this number, generally speaking, um, should only really change, um, with our ADP, right? With our average daily population. And so, um, you'll, you'll start to see this number climb as our average daily population has climbed, but, um, there is a sweet spot with our programming, so, um, really, folks should be with us, um, depending on, um, what kind of, um, offense they've been sentenced on, anywhere from about eight months, that's the, the, the norm. Um, some of our, um, some more specific cases may be with us for 18 months, but that number should stay about the same, um, and above our goal. Um, then, lastly, on the, the far right here, you'll see, um, this is our aim and wellness, um, folks, and we're measuring, um, risk reduction. So all of our folks are, um, assessed with a risk needs assessment, and, um, our goal is to reduce their risk as they're going through our programming. And as you can see, um, we have an average of a 24% risk reduction, which is pretty substantial. The piece of information I want to highlight here, obviously, these folks have, um, com, complex cases and, um, high needs. Um, the piece I want to highlight here is, when we're reducing risk, what we're actually doing is increasing stability, increasing protective factors. So increasing supports, increasing, you know, housing opportunities, access to resources and services. So the more we see that stability, the less we see them utilizing our system partners. So that's an important piece to highlight there.
Any questions for Alexis?
Thank you.
Jill Fox, Director at Alternative Sentencing. Were you guys going to ask questions about Comcor? Are we good to go?
I don't know if there were any questions.
So I'm going to skip over, right now, the percentage of offenders who successfully completed the program and kind of hit the population, which is, kind of goes into what we were discussing earlier with the jail. Obviously, our numbers have gone down significantly since COVID. And again, there's lots of possible reasons for that, and I don't think it's an easy thing to pinpoint, but we are still down about 44% since our pre-COVID numbers. With that being said, we're seeing a slight increase. I think some of that is coming because we're working with the competency folks. So we do have 10 beds reserved for competency. And then we also have about 30% of our population, which is specialty courts right now. So between DUI court, drug court, and competency is included in that as well, but that does increase the number some. And to tack on a little bit to what Captain Keaton was saying, I've got some figures from the jail population breakdown and the sentence population, and the jail has decreased significantly since 2015, where the sentence population used to be 32% of the jail, and now it's down to 15% of the jail as of 2024. And obviously, the pre-sentence population has gone up significantly. Of the 38,000 that we have had in our custody in, let's see, 2024, 84% successfully completed. And that includes our work under program, and at the time, we had the midweek program as well. And considering we lose custody of those folks literally every week, they go home for five days and they do their own thing, the fact that we have them coming back on the weekend to have a good, successful completion rate for that program is, is very helpful. And then lastly, what we do have is our recidivism rate. And I know these numbers are fairly new, we just got them finalized recently. So we have a 14% recidivism rate, and that is, again, defined as an arrest within one year of release from our program in alternative sentencing.
And, and I would just mention, when we're talking about the, the population for work release, during COVID, if you recall, we actually let everyone in the work release setting go live back in their houses so that we could support community corrections. And so community corrections shared the building over with us. So we went from a very big population down to almost zero to accommodate for community corrections population during that time. So rebuilding from that is part of that as well.
Any questions for Jill? Commissioner Shattuck.
You know, I, for both Jill and Alexis, I don't have questions. I just have to say, when you're explaining and legate the numbers, you do such a great job explaining what that means and what it looks like, that it's just really helpful. That's why probably not any questions. And I think we're all just scratching our heads about these pre, post-COVID numbers. It, it is not quite making sense and lining up. I feel like the system's all kinked up or something, and I'm not sure how it's going to look when we unkink it all. Still feels a lot of unknowns. But my, I guess the one question I do have, and maybe this applies to anyone in the room, is what, I know every county's different, and, and I preach that all the time. We've met one county, you've met one county, right? And so, and I hear that nationally as well. So, but do we see any trends with your colleagues across the state or across the region? Is these trends kind of similar, or is this just kind of unique to our county?
I would say that it's pretty consistent around the country as well as across the state. And I think everyone's kind of, same thing, wondering where and kind of doing deep dives into the data to try to figure out what this looks like. And again, I think it does go back to recovering from COVID and the length it takes to dispose a case for a variety of reasons. There's so many different factors that come into play, but that could be a big part of it.
Thank you so much. I appreciate all of you. Thank you.
Commissioner Kavals, any questions?
Not at the moment.
Okay. Just reminding folks too, that both the statistics from community corrections and alternative sentencing around days diverted from jail time, not only are we able to serve people and, and keep the community safe with a, a less restrictive kind of sentencing, but we are saving dollars. And can you remind us, maybe both of you, just like how much, how much services or how much per day our costs are for someone in community corrections and alternative sentencing versus jail?
With alternative sentencing right now, it costs $146.69. And the numbers we had for Larimer County Jail were slightly different than what Captain Keaton had said, but that was within $20 or so. So I think it's 240 or 230. Go ahead.
Yeah, our numbers for the jail that we were given
286.
Was 286.
Yep, 286.
So a little higher than what, what he had indicated.
One of the main benefits of community corrections programming is that we're funded by state dollars. So we're reimbursed per client per day from the state, so it's not coming out of general fund, which is a real big benefit. And I think it costs.
It was a little less than pretrial.
It was a little less. It was.
It was about 150. Do you have a number?
150 a day.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a little, it's, it's less than Jill's at, at ASD, and the reason being is because the population is down. So if the population goes up at work release, the cost goes down. So that's kind of a big factor. But it is a fraction from the 286 number that we have from the jail to roughly about 145, 150.
Community corrections is $142.50 per day.
Thanks, Jill.
Yeah, thanks for the reminder about the state. Hopefully that continues. We just keep getting money from the state for that. Also, just the ability for, I mean, the recidivism rates and the, you know, the community safety is because people are actually getting treatment in these programs. Are they still getting treatment in alternative sentencing as well?
We do have as an, as an option where they could attend STIR, but we do programming, so they're able to access very specific classes that may result, or may have to do with, you know, drug rehabilitation, really anything to have connections to the community. And the fact that they're allowed out per day to attend treatment if they had to at another location is always a benefit.
Right. And then the restitution obviously paid and being able to save up those dollars and get a job and, and get on their way is a really way to bring people out into the community where they're going to be successful and less likely to, you know,
Right.
Commit another crime.
Yeah, and I think the statistics show that the more days an individual spends in a traditional jail bed, their stability factor goes way out the window. And so then recidivism goes up and community safety risk goes up as well. So these alternative programs are certainly very important. We have a couple more slides.
Yeah, please, go ahead.
Okay, so the next one we have is our pretrial numbers. So pretrial, to, to fresh everyone's memory, when an individual is maybe arrested and they're placed out on bond and they're given supervision, they come to the pretrial services team. So when you look at, I just want to start with 2020. At 2020, we had 587,000 days under supervision. Having said that, that was during COVID. That was explosion. Explosion because a lot of folks were being released from the jail because of COVID, so we had more supervision for individuals. I, if you recall, we went and had a service proposal to get more staffing to be able to hold and maintain the supervision that we needed to make sure the community was safe. So those numbers have come down, which is actually a really good thing because they were too high at that point in time. But our goal is to always have over $400,000, not dollars, 400,000 jail bed days saved in times under supervision. And so we're above that this year with about 445,000 days under supervision. And again, the cost of a traditional jail bed versus the cost of supervision on pretrial, pretrial is about shy of $7 a day to supervise individuals out in the community. And again, when an individual has a house or an apartment to pay for or child support, their bills get paid, we're still under supervision and they're still answering to the charges in which they've been arrested for. So those are really good numbers at this point in time. When we look at pretrial, we look at a couple different things. We look at failure to appear rate. Are they coming to court consistently? Because we do reminders and we supervise them, and at this time, we're at about 70%. And again, there's more opportunities to go to court, so there's more opportunities to miss those court dates. But 70%, it, it is climbing, and that's pretty steady that we've had over the years. I think what's more successful is our public safety rate and whether or not they recidivated while under our supervision. And we have a successful 86% did not while they were under our supervision. So here's really good numbers that we'd like to share, and this is all of our community justice alternatives program. So that's not only ASD, but that's also community corrections. And percentage of individuals who successfully completed our program is 78%. That's pretty outstanding, that individuals that come through for that sentence, that they are successful, they're contributing back into our community, and they're not returning to the jail. So that's a very exciting number to have. I'm also going to look at the far right before I do the pie chart in front of me, but total days diverted from a traditional jail bed or a prison bed is 634,000. So pretty amazing that those individuals would be in a very higher, higher confinement setting that costs a lot more to our taxpayers, both on the state level and local level. And so those are individuals that are now no longer in prison but under our supervision or no longer in a traditional jail bed, but given the opportunity to be productive members of our community by serving their sentence, but also still doing what they need to do to be a good citizen. And then the middle one is our average daily population, individuals who are under supervision here in Larimer County. And it kind of looks at the pie chart. And what's really kind of exciting is that 30% of individuals under supervision are under community justice alternative supervision, which is an alternative to traditional incarceration, which I think is really important to note, that our community and our commissioners support non-traditional forms of incarceration because they know the success that we have. 57% are on probation, five on parole, and 8% in the jail setting. Now, I'm going to be honest that some of this hasn't overlapped. So we may have someone in community corrections in a treatment program that's also on probation. So you might have the numbers skewed a little bit there as well.
Great. Way to get through the slides. Commissioner Shattuck.
Thank you. And, and I was looking, I was waiting for that total days offenders were diverted from serving jail, prison, or under supervision. That's a striking number to still maintain that. And so that, that's 634, 634,000 times the 286. So, but there is some kind of supervision. So you're saving the 286, whichever number, that, but how much is that cost for the supervision diverted days? Is it the 146 or is it a lower number than that?
It just depends on what level of supervision. So for example, the person could be on pretrial, which is about $6.50 a day. I don't know what it is for traditional probation and what they charge, but it's a fraction of what it is to be just incarcerated without other community resources and connections. So again, when we talk about that, like 142 and that 150 that comes from our incarcerated individuals, it's a lot less than the 286. So you obviously have to, to minus that, the 286 minus what it costs us.
That's what I was trying to get it feel, so it's
Multi-million.
Multi-million. It's multi, it's still multi-million, but it's, it's, it has still a cost, but it's definitely a much, it's a really big cost savings and better outcomes.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, I appreciate you.
You bet.
Appreciate all this presentation. It's always great to, to rethink this and have these numbers in front of us again. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Anything else?
Thank you very much, all of you, for ensuring our public safety, finding the right balance, you know, serving folks based on their needs and their, and their strengths. But the bottom line is making sure that people in the community are safe. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you to everyone in this room. You all play a role in that, so we really appreciate the work that you do and I'm happy to learn about, more about what you're doing and look forward to seeing your metrics next time. But I think that they're largely, I mean, very positive and, and I think we're doing the right thing. So I think the community's happy to hear that. Lori, is there anything you want to add?
No.
Okay. All right. I think we, we managed to finish on time. So with that, at 3:00 PM, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
Say what, John?